I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Alrighty. Well, we have a motion to approve the agenda.
Another mail, phone it. Ready, alright, make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
We have a first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approve the minutes from April twenty-sixth.
I wish you all look okay, so I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. General public concerns.
Sorry if you...
Yeah, I'd like to, I just wanted to hear what you guys were talking about the river and the dam. I don't know where to start or stop, or how to open it, or what to do, what's your thoughts on it?
Well, they-
They discussed stuff in the paper.
Yeah, they, they did that survey.
Okay.
And, uh, the conservationists, is that, what's that meeting?
Hardest this week.
Yeah.
Was that much to do with the dam, though?
Yeah, I think-
I think it-
What it's all to do with?
Yeah, it all-
Or I thought maybe that was also that grant they were working on.
Yeah.
It's a fifth at five thirty.
Fifth at, yeah.
Yeah.
So I think they're maybe then getting an update here this week on, they're working, the Conservation Commission is working with a separate entity-
Yes.
That did the survey and is doing the research, and I can't remember the name of who that is, but-
I don't know if it was Mamie, Mamie-
She gave us that presentation, yeah.
And what her group is, so I think we're gonna get an update this week on where they are.
I know they, didn't they meet as a board last, was it last week?
Yeah.
Couple weeks ago. Couple weeks ago. So they wanted us to come, maybe interested parties on the fifth, for the update, and then she was gonna-
How and what?
So, just for getting an update this week.
Well, I didn't want to get the, car to head of the horse and not up, you know, I was getting on that new being that they had, and it appeared to be a little bit, one side of them trying to push it for us to get rid of the dam. And she said, Mamie said in the meeting that, you know, they've never replaced the dam or fixed the dam, and, um, I asked, I told her, I said, well, that's not true with Lake Delhi, they fixed that in state base for that. And, um, I would like to put together kind of a, I don't know, advertiser or something, I don't know what you wanna call it. But I'd like to incorporate his, let me, yeah, yeah, hang on a minute. I'd like to put new gates in, because when we did the gates in Rutland, there were sixteen, I think it was sixteen hundred and forty-three boats registered in Humble County back then. Now, I don't know, can't get the number now, it's probably less than two or three hundred. So there were a lot of boats registered, they did get a lot of use, and there was a permit, and it's in their quarters office, that's one number apart from fixing the Rutland Dam, we could've fixed the Humble Dam at the same time with new gates. It did happen, it's water over the dam now, so.
Good analogy.
Yeah, yeah, but I'd like to, uh, what I'd like to propose is, and I'll spend my own money putting together a comprehensive idea of, I'd like to put new gates in, or, you know, we need to do that to flush everything out, no matter what you do, you're gonna have a problem. And, like down at, uh, uh, or the little brown tree, Nashua, they've got those steel gates on top.
Yeah.
Re-dear top of our dam, whatever it takes to put those gates on, because we got thirty-four, thirty-six inch boards, depending on which side of the dam, the boat club used to put them on all the time, to raise the pool of water up, well then they talk about the undertow and stuff, and the DNRs talked about these fish ladders, and there's the big boulders you can put. Well, if you can envision, and that's why I'd like to spend some, anybody's interest, to spend some money and have somebody do some drawings and stuff, where you can slope that down gradually, so you wouldn't have any undertow at all, using these big boulders, these big fish ladders, that's good for the environment, good for the fish. They can climb that in the spring when the water's really cranking over there, and then that would support that dam for a hundred years. Because that's what they're gonna build anyway, the rock dam anyway. If you did that, and then, and this is just a brainstorm, those gates, and Bruce, you probably helped before when we put those gates on the, when the boat club used to do that. You know, within an hour and a half to two hours, that water level's up, you know, at thirty-six inches, we had a hard time putting those last couple of boards on. I would, it would be really cool if we could do it, and we'd become a, one of the neatest places in the state. If we could open up those gates a couple hours a day, and for, because in July and August, you don't have enough water for whether it's kayaking or rafting or whatnot. If you could open up a couple sections a day, the water's gonna drain gradually, create water flow for rafting or kayaking, and then shut it back up, and it'll fill back up within an hour. And it wouldn't even drain it that far. I, I mean, I'm just daydreaming, I don't know if it's possible or not, but it'd be really cool, because then you'd have water flow every day, you'd have people coming from all over the state to come do it in July and August when there's no water at these other places. They can talk about these, I've got a building in Charles City and one in Manchester, and I've watched them raft and stuff, in the middle of summer, there's not enough water to even raft.
Yeah, just ankle deep.
Yeah, so they wanna brag about these rafting and prodding places, well, it's not even possible at that time of year. So we could, if we could pull that off, it would be a really cool place. And the other thing to encompass everybody, we've done this through all these meetings, is the boat tra, or the bike trail. We got, I mean, my wife and I bike all over, and that's some of the prettiest rides on the East and West River, it really is beautiful. And I just noticed in the paper, there was a, a COVID grant available for five hundred to one point two, non-matching, for new trails. I don't know if you could pull it off quick enough, it had, said that'd be done by the, submitted by the seventeenth. Um, I would love, when we were kids, we used to, snow skimmers used to, enough kids, but, snow skimmers would go around where Christopher Kirkhouse's house at, where the end of the trail goes on to Thor. There used to be a snow skimmer trail around there that went over to the Gosh Park Bridge. Well, like the Cora and stuff where they got their bike trails, the most expensive parts of bridges, we've got the bridges for these bike trails, to make a nice loop and finish this off right. If you could go, if somebody could jump on it real quick and go after, because that'd be a new trail, figure out a way somewhere to tee off of, whether it's all the way up to Blacktop or somewhere before that, tee off and get over to the Corn Belt Bridge to get the campground and stuff. You know, that'd be a good way for a new trail to try and get some of that five hundred to one point two million dollars available through that COVID grant. It'd be worth applying for, to try, I don't know, if you pull it off quick enough, but. I wanna encompass everything, and the biggest thing is, I've talked to a lot of state politicians, and they told me, I mean, in a nutshell, they told me, you make this a big enough project, we'll get behind you. Like Lake Delhi, that's a private lake, and the state fixed that. You know, this crap of us always having to raise money for everything we do is ridiculous, you know? We're a county, just like everybody else, and we should get some of that money. And I've got at least seven state politicians that would jump on board, because then we're accompanied, we've got the campgrounds, we'd have the bike trails, we'd have the kayaking canoeing, and we'd have the boating above the dam. Our rivers are the most unique asset Humble has, and we need to, and plus for drainage issues and everything else, we need to take care of this. And they're behind my house, you know, and that, um, Indian Creek drains through there. You know, and Ethan Sand said in that meeting, it's like he's gonna get flooded bad one day, and he is, because that sandbar is getting hard.
Getting to one dollar.
And the water's really cranking, it comes back in around behind there, so. Sorry to jump around all over the place, but I would just like to make it for everybody, not just for the people of the river, not just for the kayakers, not just for the bikers. If we show them the other big enough project, it might be twelve, fifteen million dollars. But I've been, I, the state politicians of any kind, we have a big enough project, and they'll jump on it.
Todd mentioned that to us about the COVID money.
Yeah.
It was in the paper that-
Right.
And it's non-matching, so.
Right.
Hey, if you go get it, say we're trying to acquire this land, or try to get some easements to, to get over to that bridge, it would really be an asset to hook up to Gosh Park, to the campground. So then people could camp, and that's what brings people to town.
Right.
I mean, that would be one place to use to try to get that money. But, and then hopefully someday be able to make a loop and circle back, because nobody else has a, you know, you go to Lanesboro, or go biking, anywhere you go, you gotta go bike one way, bike the other, same path. We would be a, it'd be, Humble would be a hit with a circle, you know, with a loop, if you ever finish that loop out. And I know there's a couple places that they gave the tracks away, but we can figure out something somehow, if there's enough oil, there's a way.
Yeah.
So, I don't-
That's some good, good thoughts there.
Have you talked to Todd at all?
I have, I don't know where it goes. He acts like he's interested, but then it's such a big animal that-
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, it really is, and plus it's hard, he's been working hard at trying to get something done.
Yep.
He really has on this dam thing.
Yeah, he is.
Is that open to the public, the conservation meeting? I'm sure it probably is, isn't it, a public meeting?
It's a public meeting, yeah.
That's, uh, Wednesday.
I think it's a public meeting, I would assume, so.
I would suggest that you attend that.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but I just, I just read the paper, your meeting, what you guys were talking about, and I just wanted to see if you had the support to even, like I said, I'm willing to spend my own money just to put together some drawings and some, you know, these three aspects of it, to make, this is what we could have, you know, and get some more opinions, but, that COVID grant money, I think somebody should jump on that really fast. Because no matter what we do with the dam, getting a bike trail out to, uh, Gosh Park would be huge if you could hook it up to that trail. It'd be, because the bridge is there, that's the most expensive part of those two bridges. And Fort Dodge, you know, years ago when they were doing their trails, I was talking to people down there, and they'd love to someday hook up to Kennedy Park. So that's where you get the support out of Fort Dodge, too, you know, come out the west side of Kennedy Park, if they could ever hook up to these trails, they'd love that, too.
They're, they're bringing their trail up to Badger from Kennedy Park here, either this year or next year.
Next year.
Yeah.
Yeah, they got the plans for that.
Yeah.
They're gonna pave it all the way up to Kennedy Park, I mean, from Kennedy to Badger.
To Badger, yeah, that's great.
I know they're going around the lake of Kennedy this, I think this year.
Well, bike trails are huge, and we've spent all this money on campground the last few years, and it would just bring a lot of people to Humble, you know, to, asset that we need to use, so. Hope it doesn't waste your time.
Nope.
No, we're good.
We're still very much, we appreciate it very much.
Yep.
I just wanted, I just been told, go after a bigger picture and get something, you have a better chance of getting the state out, state out.
Yeah, government loves to spend money on big things.
Well, if it's a big enough deal, if anybody from Iowa can come here, and it's actually something unique or something really big, then they'll-
Benefit the state, yeah.
Then here's the state set of a two million dollar project, it's just a local project, and they can have a hard time getting on board.
Yeah.
That's what I've been told.
That's, you're probably right there.
Yeah.
So, anyway.
We appreciate it very much, but-
Thank you.
Where's that conservation meeting at?
Conservation, uh-
Right, right over here.
Third Wednesday. They always meet.
Well, they're doing one this, this Wednesday, just at five thirty.
Yeah.
Five thirty, yeah.
Alright, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other general public concerns? Alright, moving on, Ben?
Morning.
Morning.
I've got a couple applications to work in the county's right-of-way. The first one is for Gary Jensen. This is basically to hook into an existing intake in the road right-of-way. He's got a farm down in Weaver Township, uh, southeast forty of the southwest quarter, section fourteen. He wants to run a little bit of private tile where he's got a side hill seat, and there's an existing intake in the road ditch right there that he wants to tie into. So he's going through the steps of getting a permit to work in the county's right-of-way. What, uh, about hitting the intake, does that private tiles with an intake in the ditch? Probably, probably. But it obviously goes under the road. Runs under the road, continues running south to, uh, either Indian Creek or DD two there, I'm not sure which. So, but, any, any facility that the county has in its right-of-way is open to-
Open to-
Open to the property owners to be able to tie into. You're not, I mean, you're not allowed to go into the ditch and trench down the ditch five hundred feet.
Right.
And hook into a neighbor's, or into a neighbor's intake, but if it's in front of the property that you own, you're allowed to hook into it.
You got down here wanting to run a five-inch tile, four hundred feet of tile in the north ditch?
Yeah, I told him on that, uh, he's not, he's not looking to run in the ditch, because that's the way I read it at DD two. All he's looking to do is run four hundred-foot tile and hook into an intake that's in the ditch.
It'd be on private property with the four hundred feet then?
Yes.
I'm really good with all that, I got your questions answered, I'll make a motion to approve that permit.
Caleb, first.
Sorry.
And second, Bruce, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, now we got one for Doug Marso.
This is the one I talked to Rick last week about, uh, this is where they did that, uh, DD seven sub two crossing here last month, northwest of Rutland. Um, there's an intake in the east ditch just north of that that was hooked into the old main that ran under the road. Doug Marso's doing some piling for Dave Huntermark on the east side of the road, and when they looked at hooking up to where the intake is at, the, the old main was six or eight inches of dirt in it, so what they wanna do is just cap the old main and turn the intake to run back to the new twelve-inch line that they've got on private property. So, that way the intake still works, so they're just gonna cap our old line that ran under the road.
Ben called me with this, um-
Probably they wanted to get-
They, yeah, they wanted to finish it up before the rain, so I gave him permission to go ahead and do it, and we'll do it retroactive, and we did it quite often. He said everything was in order.
And I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
We have a first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Other than that, uh, as long as the weather holds out, we're hopeful to start paving tomorrow. Um, we're gonna start on the road north of Bod, in fact, west, they've got the milling for that portion of the roadway completed. We're currently milling on the Claire Blacktop, we got about the first mile and a half done on Friday. They're milling today, uh, they can, they can chew up about a mile and a half full width a day. So it'll take them four days to do the one down on the Claire Road, another two to do the primary roof, and then they'll be jumping over to Gosh Park and continuing that milling, but, paving wise, seems that the milling's already, there wasn't as much milling north of Bod, they can actually run a longer stretch. That way they don't catch the milling machine, so. Their plan is to do that and then jump down and do the Claire Blacktop.
Have they got that Claire Blacktop completely closed?
No. It's, there's the flaggers set up at each intersection for the mile that they're working in. You'll have to wait for, uh, the flaggers to allow you to get through.
If you just wanna cross it?
If you just wanna cross, you're fine, yeah. If you're, if you're running on it and you catch up, like right now, they're between two hundred and thirtieth street and two hundred and fortieth street. So if you're trying to run on that stretch, you'll have to wait for an opening to get through, but if you wanted to just jump across or go around, there's no problem. But the quarry's still open, you got trucks here still going in and out of the quarry.
I got a, one of them out there said they had to go around on the gravel to get back to their house.
Possibly. I mean, if the milling machine's running in one lane, the dump, uh, the side dump trucks are backed up in the other lane.
Yeah, I mean, for a day or so, they might have to go around. What company is that that's doing that again?
Uh, Inroads is doing the milling, Matthew's doing the paving.
Well then, when they get all the milling done, and they have to do the tests, do they test that to see what the-
So they've already done some test strips, I don't know if you've seen-
Oh, they did that.
They did that a couple weeks ago, didn't they?
Yeah, they did it on Gosh Park, they did a test strip, and then they did a test strip right in front of the quarry. They sent that in for DOT evaluation to basically certify the asphalt material, and they submitted a mixed design last week. I think their plan is to incorporate, to reincorporate twenty percent of the millings.
So without using all of the millings they have then?
They might have some left over that they stockpile at the old, uh, county landfill. Until they can haul it away. I know they've got projects in Franklin County, I believe they got the Wright County job, so I mean, they've got projects close by that they can haul the millings to.
Everything else is good?
Everything else is good, uh, the bridge is back open on Quebec, we opened that on Tuesday. So the farmers were able to get across that and get their fields planted. Uh, we're winding down on hauling rock. Should be pretty close by the end of this week with our first wave of hauling rock.
That helps on some of those roads where they cut the shoulders off.
Yeah, we did get a phone call this morning on, on Elm Avenue.
I bet it's very slimy.
We, we had cut that last week, and with the rain that we got overnight, which I'm, I'm not sure what the totals were for rain, I haven't-
Something over a half inch.
Yeah, I didn't look at the rain gauge, but it, you know, it made it sloppy and, give it today and, and tomorrow, you know, if there's a light breeze and some sunshine, it'll firm right back up.
Obviously, they didn't get the rock on that stretch, uh, yet.
No, I mean, they're, they're trying to get rid of the, there's a lot of number falls.
Well, the river was still well within its banks, so we didn't get that much rain overnight, I was hoping for a lot more.
I don't think that even made it to tile lines.
Yeah, I guess.
I got grass seed I planted about three weeks ago that hasn't even considered sprouting, so the weather's been too cold and, I don't know, rainy.
Well, okay. Anything else for Ben? Alrighty.
Okay, thanks, Ben.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
Let's move down and, uh, do approve wire for Pam Kirsch as a payroll clerk in the auditor's office retroactive till April fourteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Is she gonna be just a payroll clerk, or is she gonna be a deputy auditor?
She's a deputy auditor.
How come it don't say that here? It says payroll clerk.
It should be deputy auditor, payroll clerk.
So she's strictly working for the auditor's office now?
Yes. Unless they need help over there with the transition and stuff or whatever, I arranged that with Jimmy.
I'll make a motion to hire Pam as a deputy auditor slash payroll clerk.
I'll second that.
Caleb, a first and a second, any more discussion, all in favor?
I-
Motion carries.
I have a question.
Yep.
So when she, when she was the, did she work for Janet, or was she working for the state?
She's working for Janet.
I just didn't know how that, I didn't know how we, I didn't know if she was an actual employee of us or through the state, meaning she did the-
Did for you.
Yeah, I just-
So who's doing her duties over there now in the treasurer's office?
Janet's, Janet's process of hiring somewhere.
Oh, is she? Okay.
Somebody in the paper, there's an ad in the paper.
Okay, but there's no one yet.
I was al, I was often wondering how that worked, whether that was she was our employee, or if she was an actual employee of the state, meaning she did the license stuff, so. Perfect.
I think they gave us seven bucks a license to do that.
Oh, no way.
Yeah, it's nothing. Yeah. So, it's a losing situation, any time it takes. Okay, let's go back up to DD seven sub two, we'll probably have to go into drainage for this.
Make a motion to go into drainage for that?
Second.
We have a first and a second, going into drainage, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, we are in drainage.
Oh, thanks.
They yelled at me because I didn't put mine out for a couple of weeks.
I know who you are. I don't say that.
I forgot about that. I usually remember. It thundered pretty good last night.
Yeah, it did.
We thundered quite a bit.
I was tired of it.
Lightning showed too, but, it just like, we had all the ingredients, you know?
Couldn't quite squeeze them anymore on it.
Cloud enough to make it.
Not as glad for what we did get.
I know.
Oh, I know, yeah.
We're thankful, but it's just, you know, seems like it just forgot how to rain.
Yeah.
I hate to say that, but, it's been raining a lot.
Good morning. How are you? Good.
Good. So-
Drainage is pretty short and simple this morning, I received an email from Colin at Bolton Make that they had a couple adjustments on the price of DD seven sub two. There were two of the connections that were buried before they got the actual GPS locations, we talked about that last week. And they ended up going from a size eighteen inch to a size fifteen inch tile, so they are making an adjustment on the overall price from fifty-three thousand down to fifty thousand, so. There is a net decrease of three thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars. And all he's asking is just for signatures for approval on that.
Well, that makes sense, I have a question relating to this same project that we talked about last week or so. The failure to GPS locate a couple of the tile connections, is there anything, I know this doesn't specifically pertain to that, but there was talk about that, if you recall?
Yeah, I don't know if that five hundred dollar cost was actually going to be incorporated, um, per landowner, if they were going to focus that just on-
Your own.
The land itself, yeah.
On the whole project.
Yeah.
Right, so that's how that was gonna be taken care of?
Yeah, I think it, I'm personally, I guess you go to the landowner, because it's a private tile connection.
Right, they didn't specifically put a X marks the spot at the general location.
Mm-hmm. Well, there again, whenever you work on a main, it goes to the district, so then I, then, yeah, I'm kinda-
I think the private, I would agree with that, it's a private tile into the-
Yeah, so if you do have a problem with the connection, it always goes to the district. When you, you know, if there's a, if there's a suckhole there or whatever, the district's gonna end up paying for that connection. For, you know, repair, don't you think it will?
Well, I mean, you're talking about the private tile connection into the new main. Yeah, most likely.
If there ever is a problem-
If it's right at where it hooks onto the district main tile, yeah, it's gonna be a work order fix. But, I just, you know, I'm just mildly confused. The talk was that if it's an extra five hundred dollar charge for the, you know, GPS location that didn't get completed, you know, how that was gonna be, I didn't know if there was a, you know, this is a deduction because the tile was smaller and the materials didn't cost as much. Uh, if that was reflected back to the contractor, or, you know, we, yeah, talked that it would be less-
Well, we're still holding five thousand thirteen dollars and eighty cents in retainage.
Right.
So, if we come to that conclusion, or the, you know, we haven't really settled that issue yet.
No, but we talked about it, because-
And that will have to come out of that retainage.
Okay.
To the contractor for, I mean, he's gonna have-
That makes sense.
You know, have the option to either go fix it, which they really don't want them back in there tearing up something that they say is perfectly good, and the contractors, probably, these other connections all look good, so I don't know why these two want-
Right, and they do have a general location, but they do know, it's just not GPS, as a couple of the other ones were, and all of them should have been.
Yeah.
Well, how do we get around this again, from-
Happening in the future.
Happening in the future, I think when we talked the other day-
Bruce had a great idea.
I just think that, you know, you put a, a number, and then, um, when I told Rick what my number was, he said, well, I think it should be a percentage. A percentage of the cost of the project, because- Because the, the engineer said, well, we can't be there all the time to make sure that these inspections are done. We can't either.
No.
But by the same token, we hired you guys and the, the stipulations were that it was gonna be done. Everything was recorded, everything was GPS and everything was done according to, but it didn't get done again. So I think your ten percent number that you threw out when we were visiting, I think it's a hell of an idea.
You know, you could just put enough teeth in it and for the engineer, he gets deducted ten percent, the contractor gets deducted ten percent if we don't have everything photographed and GPS.
Yep.
Put that in our future contracts and I'll guarantee it, it'll be done.
I think it's.
Which we have, but, you know, by the same token.
But we never had a penalty.
Right, no, I agree with the penalty, a hundred percent. Make sure it's stated that that's required. Because we've had bigger job, way bigger job than this, it was stated and there was a, there again, it's more cost to that project, to the district, when the engineer company claims, oh, we've got an onsite guy there.
Yeah.
Didn't, didn't get those either.
Didn't get it done.
Didn't get that either.
Where the contractor has to wait for a half a day for that engineer to show up so they can take a photo of it when he has a.
He can, all, all they're asking is when picture, there's an as-built plan, here's your connection, here's what it is.
Yeah.
Period. It's not, that's not hard.
Not rocket science.
Not now, not now. And I agree with that, but stipulate that and, you know, the engineer, obviously on a project, works with the contractor, they both know that, so it's in both your laps.
Here's what's. That's the best part, the engineer, when he looks at the job and sees the way that we're gonna do it, if he says, well, we don't do it that way, well, then you're gonna do this.
Right.
Right?
Period. I mean, the engineer and the, the contractors are gonna know it because they're gonna know it when they come and bid on the job. It's gotta be there, it's gonna be required, and if it's not, you're gonna pay heavily.
Yeah, you just, if you don't do all the connections as per protocol, then you're just ten percent.
So every time this happens, we look like dummies for saying, well, nobody was there to take a picture, nobody was there to GPS it. Okay, clearly stated in the contract.
And I like the fact that it's, uh, if it's an engineer project, that it's their ten percent and the contractor's ten percent. And that, my thought is, they would work a little closer together.
They would.
When they have the discussion about the project, they'll have the discussion that they're gonna make darn sure that takes place. Because you don't need the engineer company to send their field guy out and spend more than what the project costs for him to stand around.
Nope.
All they have to do is ask it of the contractors, they can check with them, and if there's any questions, obviously they can.
Because I mean, they can shoot a picture and send it to the engineer, yep, looks good.
Yep.
Period.
If there's a problem or something, they, they need to have the communication back and forth.
I agree.
You know everyone of those employees has a, a camera on their phone.
Yeah.
So anybody could take that picture.
Very.
So how do we get this in an ordinance or?
Well, when we do our next contract. The thing is, when we do our contracts, we don't even know who we're gonna be doing it with, so we just have to make sure it's in the contract.
But you don't have to have a ordinance or?
No, there's no ordinance to this, it's just a contract.
Ruling or anything, I don't?
Nope.
Not that I know of, I don't know where you'd put it.
I think it's per contract, this is what's required. Is there, on a diff- on another, this would be all projects.
Yeah.
You know, because each project could be a little different, you'd specify this to be done or that to be done, but then this would be every tile connection is located in GPS and.
I think even when we do box culverts, we should have that in there because quite often there's a stupid, sometimes there's a dang, they, uh, private tile that comes under the road and goes into the box culvert.
Yeah.
You know, the old one, and then they have to reroute them.
Well, maybe we'll just visit with Ben and see what his recommendation for stuff like that and just have to write it into.
All of our contracts.
Our contracts and make sure that it's done that way.
Looks fairly simple on this.
I think so.
And I would say you bold it, you know, whatever you do in that way, they can't say, oh, you should not say, and no, it's gonna be a big bold letters.
And if it's dealing, yeah, with an engineering company, that they understand it, the contractor understands it, and they understand it together.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So that's, that would certainly put a little teeth in it like.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
Yep.
All right. So we have our, uh, payment voucher is actually what it is.
I make a motion to pay the contractor an S button on number one, forty-five thousand one hundred twenty-four twenty.
Okay, we have a first.
Holding back ten percent.
I'll second this.
Second, Bruce, any more discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, anybody opposed?
Motion carries. Do we get the change order resolved? Do we have an act, because they're just two separate, they did the pay estimate.
Yeah, that, that's the.
Change order is just. But they're two separate, it doesn't prove.
Yeah, you're right.
Yep.
All right, we'll back up the truck a little bit.
Make the motion to approve the change.
Number one.
I'd make the motion to approve the change order number one.
I'll click it.
We have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, all right.
Now we, now we're in the area.
We got him now.
Yep.
Okay, now we just got committee reports left.
Well, you wanna go out of drainage or?
Yeah.
Make a motion to go out of drainage.
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll write this and Trish back in because she might want more stuff for us.
Luckily, we don't want you to say.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You can just. I'll go get.
Okay.
Thank you.
Payment trigger again. Forty-five one twenty-four twenty.
Welcome.
Welcome back.
Uh, committee reports, Rick, as I said, I had, uh, Tuesday night, we had a annual monthly Zoom meeting. Um, all is well there, that's all I had for the week.
Okay, um, Tuesday, um, I was here at the courthouse, um, for the joint, um, drainage meeting with Pocahontas County. Uh, and then also Tuesday afternoon, um, uh, let's see, we had a kitty cat, um, meeting and Wednesday, what's my busy, busy day? I had a Zoom advisory meeting in the morning. Uh, then we, um, went over to, um, Hossley to meet with Rolling Hills. They were discussing, of course, the person that they were going to hire, um, for, uh, the Rolling Hills, the service coordinator, and they did make an offer, um, to an individual. They did state the name, so I don't know if I should state it now, I know who it is, but since they didn't state it in the meeting, I don't know if I should, should state it. Um, there'll be, they will be approving, um, that person next month at their meeting. Um, and then Thursday, I did a virtual, um, meeting with a NACO, um, the American, um, rescue, um, plant. And that's where the counties get the individual money. We, we, was that last week or the week before? Um, but anyway, what they, um, said, you need to make sure that we have a valid DUNES number and a SAM re- uh, recog- not resignation, um.
Registration.
Thank you, registration. So I don't know if we have all of that yet.
Working on the SAM, that's a, a weird one to get.
I know, I, I clicked on the, um, they, they gave, um, places we could click on to be able to figure out how to do that. And, um, ISAC also sent, are you on ISAC? Do you, are you on ISAC emails yet?
Yeah.
Okay, they sent something out on that too, and I clicked on that also, so it looked like it was a little bit more in detail than the DUNES. Have you got the DUNES number already?
Yeah, we do, we have.
Okay.
So I'm trying to figure out which one is which belongs to the courthouse and.
Cause I think, is it the SAM's, that's what, if I, I might have got the two mixed up, it's how you get the money in, is that what the SAM's is, where the money come? There's one where you'd have to have where the money comes into, we already have the ledger, but they were talking about how the money, you have to have, I think, both before they can, the money can be accepted in.
Is this like, that way the federal government can basically keep track of the funnel?
I'm sure it is, I'm sure it is. I, I am sure it's a way to track it more. And then the other part of that, um, uh, Zoom meeting was, um, of course vaccination. They kinda did a joint one and, uh, how we as government officials need to make sure that we're, we're speaking up to encourage people to get vaccinations until we get more people vaccinated, um, it's gonna be harder and harder to open up our areas completely and, so we just need to encourage people to get vaccinated. I got my second one. I'm completely, I've spent three weeks now, so I'm supposedly.
I'm going right after that.
And you can take your mask off, that works.
True, but they, no, they, no, then you're not listening to what the CDC says because they're saying.
They want us to wear masks forever.
No, not forever, they're just saying in, you got multi, um, groups together. So you, I don't know where you've been, I don't know where Eric's been, you know what I mean? So when you have, you're in a confined space, there's not good ventilation in here. So it's called being smart to wear your, um, uh, mask when you're in a confined area. This is an old building, you know the ventilation is not good, it, it doesn't exchange out, so you're breathing each other's air. So I'm gonna do everything I can to protect myself and I'm gonna encourage other people to do the same thing. So, and let's see, Friday, uh, we had, um, interviews for, uh, the kitty cat daycare for a new director, and we had three interviews, um, they went very well, we're looking into references now, and then as soon as we get that done, then we will be, um, uh, making an offer once we get all of our ducks in a row.
Glad they found someone.
I am too, I am too, and I'm glad we got somebody that's very, I mean, all, all of them would have been a, a good, a good, a good choice, but there was one that really stood out. That was, that was a good meeting.
Uh, Tuesday evening, I was up there for the joint meeting with Pocahontas. Uh, Tuesday afternoon, I had a VA approved claims, and it looks like we'll probably be turning back money coming back in, because we're not using all that we've got allowed budget to do. A little bit, unless the bottom falls out. Uh, Wednesday, we had a Pathfinder meeting, it was Zoom. And that's all I had. I did go yesterday, I was out by the, Gary Keennesses out here and watched, looked at the ditches, there's quite a bit of slough off in there, that's what the cleaning up looks like, so. That's it.
All right, on, uh, this past Wednesday, I had a decategorization, uh, conference phone call, it was kind of a quick, uh, meeting that needed to get some business wrapped up. So it was just a conference call that morning with the decategorization board, and that was my only official quick meeting last week. And I got a question, so how did the, that joint meeting with, uh, Pocahontas County go? Did they, did it resolve?
Yeah, they're going to pay the damages, which I, I thought was kinda low per acre wise.
Yeah.
We pay more here. Uh, and then they're gonna approach the landowner about correcting the right-of-way on this drainage ditch, because one side of the ditch has, part of it has no right-of-way at all. No easement, I should say, when I say right-of-way, I should say easement.
Yeah.
And then parts of it, the easement goes out four hundred feet. I mean, it's the, it's really not good. So they wanna clean that easement up so it goes out forty feet from the ditch, both sides, and correct it just for future issues.
Yeah.
On the road, so they approached the landowner about getting that straightened out.
Yeah, because typically it is approximately forty feet.
Yeah, and this one here, it just, all of a sudden, it just a big old boom went way out.
Yeah.
That doesn't even make sense.
No, it did, and then one side, I mean, it was several hundred feet wide easement was on part, on one part, one forty acre parcel.
Oh, they have come up with that?
I have no idea, and they didn't know where their curse is done a long, long time ago, yeah.
Must have been a bad day for their surveying, but wouldn't it be just simple to say that it's about forty feet, that it's approximately forty foot of easement on top of.
Yeah, see, that, that's where they got into trouble, because where there was no easement, they threw spoils out in this guy's crop, and he says, well, you got crop damage here because there's no easement.
That's how it came about then.
Right.
Yeah, so they're gonna get that corrected.
But anyway, so I'm just curious that, that they did get it resolved with your joint meeting, okay?
Yep.
Okay, um, I was up here Tuesday for that meeting at ten. Uh, Wednesday afternoon, I met with Dave Minikas out at the old landfill out here, did a, a spring inspection on that. Everything, everything looks really good out there, our test numbers have been coming in good. He's gonna talk to the DNR again about trying to get our wells, possibly some of them pulled so we don't have to do water, groundwater testing, or else maybe knock it back to where we only do it every couple of years. So we only got five years left till it's closed.
They didn't come up.
Twenty twenty-six, I think is the last.
They didn't come up with any other pot ideas?
I just wanna get it closed and done before they change their minds and.
No kidding.
Make it cost more, but everything looks really good out there. Um, and then I, uh, went out and looked at the same thing Dave did out at DD six, was they're gonna clean from the Y, two sections going north up to Roosevelt, because there's a lot of water being held back at Roosevelt there.
Yep.
So they're gonna clean that, start fairly soon, and fix the sloughes, the sloughs along the blacktop.
Which is also the same.
Same project, yeah, it's just a different branch.
Yep.
Off the main and.
Look like there are four of them right there on the blacktop and then you can see them going back up, you can see a few.
Yeah, it's actually sloughing on the south side where the blacktop is, it's, uh, I know they fixed it years ago and it, back when we had all wet rain, it's ground was so saturated, stuff just slid back in, so. So that's all I had. Do you have anything else for us, Trish?
I, I have a request, I visited with, um, Jim Grunberg Saturday. They spent almost seven hours chasing fires Saturday. Um, one was out here at the old landfill. The city was burning some trees. Then Saturday morning, when the wind came up, all the numbers got a little air to them and started blowing that into the, and ended up getting quite a large area burning. About the time they got done with that, they got back to the fire department, then Bo had, uh, issue up there that some bales got on fire. So, and Jim said, it's statewide, everybody's dry, this little bit of rain will help, but please for people that are out in the country, um, that are gonna burn garbage or just look at the weather, because anymore we have the ability to find out that the wind's gonna blow it sixty mile an hour. So don't push a roll of match, and one of the ones yesterday, they think someone threw a cigarette on the trail. So he just said, as dry as it is, we have a lot of kindling stuff that we can't, they don't have the ability to get to some of it, so please help them. Um, they spent seven hours Saturday chasing fires and they were pretty.
Yeah, it was windy.
Pretty worn out by the time they got done.
Yeah.
So.
Plus, they couldn't believe it got as warm as it did on Saturday.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
So he just said if we'd all do our part and pray for a little rain, we'll get a little help from Mother Nature and go that route, so. I said I would bring that up.
Good idea.
Use common sense.
Yep.
I have, uh, this was, well, I've been thought about this one, this, this info and that information we get every couple of weeks. Uh, brought up, and it's a tabular article here. What are the county's, uh, responsibility is with the redistricting, uh, legislative districts, if you will? That's gonna be. That's gonna be this year, because I, yeah, obviously after last year's census. If there's any thing come in to, you know, whatever the county's responsibility are, is with that. I mean, I know we have a hand in, in some of it.
You guys will have to determine who you'd like to have on the board, you can have one supervisor. I'm trying to see how it's gonna work since you're all the same party, um, and who we choose. But next week, I'll have it on the agenda to, um, do a resolution to appoint persons. So, I'll be sending out information, what's on today, yet to be.
So, who, who, what kind of people from what groups are on this board, you know?
I really don't know.
Yeah, it's the crazy part is, none of us here in this room have been through this before.
No.
No. There's a protocol of...
Steps to follow.
Yep, steps to follow, um... And there's all sorts of fun stuff.
Hmm. Representatives weren't losing any, right? Representatives?
No.
I mean, the census numbers were strong enough that, like, some of the states that they thought would gain in the blues, you know, I think, in California.
Califor...
It was, it was three surprising states, yeah, California, um, where else was it? They had that on the news last week, gosh, I can't, it was, California totally blew me away.
Everybody's leaving because of the high taxes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, I guess we just have to do what we do.
Yeah, you, there was, this doesn't really, it just kind of throws out some, some scenarios and talks about state and that, but there is a list of it. And it, it's, it was on, uh, the committee, yeah, Trish brings up a point, it can't be, it's gotta have kind of equal...
Gotta be bipartisan.
Bipartisan, it's a representation, bipartisan, and then it's, uh, do this timeframe, do that timeframe, of course. When this first came out, it's all been extended already. Whatever the normal dates are, are later, but it still has to, the same process still has to be followed.
Yeah.
And, yeah, there's a lot to it. Was it Wednesday? I had a meeting for, um, election stuff, and this was part of the meeting.
Okay.
And they went over how to do some of it, and the resources to find more information.
Perfect. That was, what I was wondering, so we're after it, I mean, there's no reason, just because the state has decided that everything's still always pushed back, that we don't keep after it, do whatever is required of the county side and just get it done, because it would, uh, it potentially could create redistricting a little bit, because of political, or not political, but population and other shifts, if there is any.
It'll be interesting to see.
It will be.
Honestly, how everything shifted, so...
Maybe there's not much of any difference.
Yeah.
That's what they wanna find out. So, that was my only other thing, so it sounds like we're working through that, or we will be.
And, uh, how many people go into that joint meeting?
I'm gonna try to...
I think.
I'm gonna vote with you.
I'm gonna get opposed to do.
Oh, I have it. Ready to go. I mean, I have an agenda for it already.
That's the Conservation Building, correct?
Right, Conservation Building, yeah.
Yeah, I'm cautiously optimistic I'll be there.
But there's no, so I'm gonna motion if you're...
I'm ready.
Out of the thing.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
They're adjourned at nine twenty-six. Six.